Good evening, everyone. If you could have a seat, we're going to get started. Hello? If you could all please get a seat, we're going to get started. Good evening. I'm Charlie Dodge. I'm the city manager of Pembroke Pines and I'd like to welcome all of you here this evening to listen about our hurricane preparedness. And in this town hall meeting, we're going to explain to you what the city has done to prepare for. And you'll have an opportunity to ask questions at the end. We all know that there are many years that go by where we're very fortunate that there isn't a hurricane. However, you never know when one might hit us. So we need to be prepared. And this city, every year at the beginning of the hurricane season, we go through a series of staff meetings and we take inventory of all of our resources and what is necessary for us to be prepared if, in fact, there's an oncoming hurricane or a storm. We've also created in the city, and it was a recommendation a couple of years ago, that the important thing about providing information to the public is to have one voice. And we all know from the experiences of the last hurricane with Irma, there was so much information going out. Information that was inconsistent. That was provided to us by the county, by the cities, and it was, in some cases, even contradictory whether there's a boil water notice. And it is sometimes confusing because there are sections of the city that has county water, but the majority of it is city water. So if there's a problem with a county plant, they would say, "Well, the water, you should boil." And we were putting out notices, "Well, no, you don't really need to boil water." So that gave us the impetus to create a Department of Communications. And that Office of Communications is going to be providing information, not only during hurricanes, but any information that the city puts out in the future. And we're currently doing it. And we provide that information through a whole series of different social media venues, such as Facebook, YouTube, Twitter. And we want you all to be aware of what those resources are. So this evening, the Office of Communications has prepared a video of everything that we have done in our preparation. It's not a long video. We'd like you to just sit back and relax. And at the end of the meeting, you'll all have an opportunity to come up here and be able to ask a question. I'd also like to acknowledge this evening, Mayor Ordis is here and Commissioner Siple was here. There she is. Commissioner Siple is here. And we also have all of the people who are involved in the communications, the implementation, and working. All of the key people in our hurricane preparedness program are here this evening also to respond to any questions you have. So with that, we're going to start the video. It's about 14 minutes, and then we'll open it up for discussions.
Hi. My name is Fire Prevention Captain Daniel Amigha with the City of Pembroke Pines Fire Rescue. I'm here today to share with you some tips and resources for hurricane preparedness. Hurricane season starts in the month of June and lasts until November. As you know, hurricane season here in South Florida can change very quickly, and it's quite unpredictable. Preparing yourself and your family's safety is crucial. The first step we can all take is to stay informed. Besides news and radio stations, our city provides an awesome resource for information called Code Red. Code Red is a high-speed notification system that the City of Pembroke Pines uses to send out mass notifications by phone, email, and text to keep our citizens informed. Code Red will inform you in the event of an evacuation, utility outage, water main break, fire, flood, chemical spill, or any other emergency situation. The city may also use Code Red to communicate non-life safety matters such as planned road closures, water main repairs, water service interruptions, et cetera. There is no charge to register for or use Code Red, and your personal information is kept confidential. For more information on Code Red, visit ppines.com/hurricane. Once you're set up with Code Red and are ready to monitor the stormy season and stay informed, you should know that there is a difference between a hurricane watch and a hurricane warning. A hurricane watch is issued 48 hours in advance of an anticipated onset of tropical storm-force winds in the area. A hurricane warning is issued within 36 hours. In addition, there may also be tornado watches. Tornadoes can also occur before, during, and even after a hurricane. Along with staying informed, developing your hurricane plan before a storm is crucial and should include: holding a family meeting, discussing whether you'll need to evacuate, ensuring your assets are protected, assess your home for vulnerable areas, make a plan to protect your vehicles, determine whether someone in your home has special needs, make a plan for your pets, gather enough supplies, and notify others of your plan. Decide to stay or go. If authorities advise or order you to evacuate, grab your go-bag and leave immediately. Your go-bag. A go-bag should be easy to carry and kept in a place where you can grab it quickly. Your bag should include items such as: a cellphone to communicate with the family, cash; make sure to have small bills and change; medical supplies including first-aid kits and a seven-day supply of medications; critical documents like your birth certificate, social security card, and phone numbers on a piece of paper where you can keep them in a waterproof container or even a Ziploc bag; tools and safety items such as a whistle, multi-purpose tool, matches or lighter, and a flashlight with extra batteries; avoid candles or any open flame; food and supplies, at least a three-day supply for your entire family; and don't forget to check regularly a restock to replace as needed; hygiene and sanitation supplies to prevent the spread of bacteria and infectious diseases; protective gear to stay warm and dry; and don't forget about the hands and feet; comfort and priceless items. Remember that you may be away for an extended period of time. Pack items that are irreplaceable or may provide comfort to your family, especially your children. Know the evacuation routes and shelter locations. There are general population shelters, shelters for individuals with special needs, which include those who need transportation, have medical needs, or have disabilities. There are also pet-friendly shelters, and just like the special needs shelters, they will require preregistration. More information can be found on the city's website at ppines.com/hurricane. Plan for the entire household. Children, elders, and pets all have special needs. It is recommended to have a full tank of gas and maintain a basic emergency supplies such as snacks, bottled water, first-aid kits, flashlights, flares, blankets, jumper cables, tools, and a change of clothes in your vehicle. If you have a pet, include a kit for them containing at least three-day supply of food, water, and medicine. Don't forget to include their medical records, a collar with ID tags, their harness and leash, crate or pet carrier, sanitation supplies, and a picture of you together in case you both become separated from each other. A favorite toy for your pet can also help to comfort them and keep them calm. If you're not in a mandatory evacuation zone, you may still decide to leave the area. You may need to move to higher ground, or you may choose to stay in your home. If you decide to stay home, remember that even if the high winds and floodwaters do not reach you in your home, you may lose power or water, and you may not be able to leave your home for several days if the roads are impassable. Take action to protect your property against wind and water damage. Installing shutters or plywood and utilizing sandbags can greatly reduce the amount of damage to your home. Bring loose, lightweight objects such as patio furniture, garbage cans, and bicycles inside. You can also anchor objects that would be unsafe to bring inside, such as gas grills and propane tanks. Be sure to trim or remove trees close enough to fall on the buildings. Don't wait until last minute to do this. Also, make sure that you fill up the tank for all your vehicles, generators, and gas-powered tools. All containers should be five gallons or less. Be stored in a cool, dry, ventilated area, secured away from appliances and out of reach of children. Post-disaster tips to stay safe. If you've evacuated the area, wait for public officials to say it's safe before returning. Each year, a significant number of people are injured or killed while cleaning up after a hurricane. As you begin cleanup, keep these safety tips in mind. Don't wait in floodwaters, which can contain dangerous debris like broken glass, metal, dead animals, sewage, gasoline, oil, and downed power lines. Don't enter a building until it has been inspected for damage to the electrical system, gas lines, septic system, and water lines for wells. Wear appropriate protective equipment such as gloves, safety glasses, rubber boots, and a mask to protect you from debris and airborne particles such as mold and dust. Don't use electrical equipment if it's wet or if you are in standing water. Throw out any food, including canned items, that were not maintained at a proper temperature or have been exposed to floodwaters. Don't eat from a flooded garden. When in doubt, throw it out. Avoid drinking tap water until you know it's safe. If uncertain, boil or purify it first. Clean and disinfect everything that you got wet. Mud left on floodwater can contain sewage bacteria and chemicals. Never use a generator, gasoline-powered equipment, or tools, grills, camp stoves, or charcoal-burning devices indoors or in any partially enclosed area. Keep these devices outside and at least 20 feet from the door, windows, and vents. Obey all curfew and emergency orders. If you have a swimming pool and the barrier has fallen or it is damaged, you must repair or replace it as soon as possible. A swimming pool poses a life safety threat, even if it is empty. Until you can replace or repair your pool barrier, a temporary contractor safety mesh can be erected and bought at your local hardware store. Stay informed and practice these safety tips. Being prepared can make all the difference to you and your family's safety.
Hello, I'm Stephen Buckland. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Services for the City of Pembroke Pines. Generally, we start prepping heavily 72 hours ahead of the storm. At this time, we go about the city, replacing up hurricane shutters, picking up different items that may be out in the common areas of these city facilities that can become projectiles during the storm so that we can lessen the damages that happen. At this time, we request that all citizens, please, do not trim your trees and place those out for bulk pickup. The city and its vendors do not have the resources available to pick up such large volumes of debris just prior to the storm. So please, do not trim your trees and place them out for curbside pickup just prior to a storm. Once the winds have died down to a certain level, we send particular personnel out into the city to evaluate where we have the most damage. We check for downed trees, damaged city facilities, uprooted trees that have caused damage to sidewalks. We concentrate on only getting that debris out of the roadways and off to the side so that the residents can travel freely about the city and also allow our emergency personnel to get access to where they need to go to provide the help that is needed. It is very important at this time that our residents know that when they start putting debris out for pickup, that they separate tree debris from C and D. C and D is considered anything that is construction-related. So it could be things from shingles to two-by-fours to privacy fencing. The reason that we need these things to be separated is because there are rules and regulations that are set by FEMA that we have to follow. These items do need to be collected separately. Once substantial completion of the debris removal process has been obtained, we then turn our eyes towards hazardous trees and limbs and stump removals. Once cleanup operations have been achieved and we are back to normal in the city, we do not sit back and relax. We immediately start preparing again for the next event that may hit us.
The City of Pembroke Pines is committed to providing you with recommendations to keep your family safe during a hurricane event. As a hurricane approaches, the police department will be monitoring the storm and making decisions based on the tracking. The police department will then open the City Emergency Operations Center. The EOC will be staffed with representatives from the city manager's office, the police department, the fire department, public services, utilities, recreation, community services, finance, and the Office of Communications. Each of these departments will have assigned areas in the EOC. Each department representative will play a significant role, receiving and transmitting important information relevant to their specialized areas. All of the information in the EOC is tracked in a special software program that each city shares with the county's emergency operations center. This is very important for emergency resource deployment, damage assessment, equipment requests, pod and shelter information, and evacuation updates. After the storm, traffic is a significant concern. Debris and power lines make conditions very unsafe. Please limit your traveling and adhere to any curfew information. We try to staff intersections during the post-storm phase. However, there will be intersections without public safety personnel. Those intersections must be treated as four-way stops. As a hurricane approaches, our emergency management coordinator will be conferring with the Broward Emergency Manager on activations for the municipal emergency operations centers. Once the municipal EOC is activated, it is staffed 24 hours a day. The city will be issuing information updates through the Office of Communication. Once the hurricane winds are sustained at 50 miles an hour, all public safety personnel will be sheltering in their designated areas. During the post-hurricane phase, the police department and the fire department will be checking assigned areas of the city for public safety assistance and damage assessments. If there is a need due to extensive damage to infrastructure, the city will deploy available resources to assist with water and food distribution, security, welfare checks, and roadway clearing.
Hello, my name is Christina Sorenson, Director of Recreation and Cultural Arts. Hurricane season is here, and in order to be prepared, the City of Pembroke Pines is asking people to sign up to volunteer to help others if we are faced with another hurricane. With past hurricanes, our city benefited greatly by having staff and many volunteers help immediately after the storm. Examples of volunteer work include food distribution, water distribution, wellness checks, and debris cleanup. If you are interested in volunteering after a storm hits our area, please go to the city's website to access our hurricane relief volunteer form and follow the instructions to submit your information. While we welcome volunteers after a storm, we are asking for members of the community to submit the form prior to the hurricane so we have volunteers ready to go as soon as we are given the all-clear. The easiest way to sign up is to visit our website at ppines.com, type in hurricane volunteer in the search bar, and fill out the form. Thank you for your continued commitment in making Pembroke Pines a beautiful place to live, work, and play.
Being safe starts with being prepared, being informed, and in knowing the right information at the right time. The City of Pembroke Pines encourages all residents to take an active role in preparing themselves and their families for a hurricane and in being informed. It only takes one hurricane to change your life and our city. We have diligently been working to ensure that communication with you is accurate and timely regarding hurricanes. Pembroke Pines has one voice, one main resource to go to, and one goal in mind at all times: for our residents, businesses, and city as a whole to be prepared and remain safe. The city's website at ppines.com/hurricane is where you should go to get as much information as possible regarding how to prepare and what to do should a hurricane strike our area. You can reach this information by typing hurricane in the search bar from the homepage link and by going to the top of the website under the Living in Pines or How Do I sections. Now is the time to visit the site. Get comfortable with it. Find the information that makes you confident in your preparations. This is also the official source to go to for information on what is happening during and after a hurricane. Learn FEMA requirements for debris pickup, what streets may be closed. It will be consistently updated. After a hurricane, updates will be constantly posted right on the homepage. Through any storm, we work closely with the emergency management, state agencies, FEMA, and our local media in getting the right information for you. We have a hotline phone number in place right now that will be activated during an emergency situation so residents and businesses can report or ask relevant questions about what is happening. That phone number is 954-565-9571. We will be reposting information on the city's social media, Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, Twitter, and Nextdoor, and on Pines Media TV 24/7. Helpful information is always printed in the city's newspaper, City Connect. Get information through Code Red and Notify Me, two key ways to get information sent to you via phone, text, or email. Register today through the city's website. Pembroke Pines created a citizen hurricane ad hoc committee to get input on how best to ensure safety and smooth transitions. Presentations from our police, fire, and community service departments are held throughout the year. And a hurricane town hall meeting in City Hall at the start of hurricane season allows an exchange of information for everyone to take advantage of. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact us.
Begin asking questions. I would like to acknowledge, we have an awful lot of volunteers in this community, and it was really evident during the hurricane, the number of volunteers that showed up to help people who needed assistance, especially our elderly population. But also, I'd like to recognize our ad hoc committee, our residents here who serve on our hurricane preparedness committee. If you could stand, I know there's a number of you here. Or did you leave? There we are. Thank you all very much for your assistance. We truly appreciate it. And before we open up the floor for any questions, Mayor Ordis, do you have anything you would like to say?
No.
Very good.
New presentation.
Thank you. This also is on our website and on YouTube, so you can tell your neighbors who didn't get an opportunity to view it. It's also, has been filmed, so if you have an opportunity to watch any of our videos. Are there any questions, particularly what was presented this evening? If you wouldn't mind coming down, we have a mic so that everybody could hear your question. Well, please come here and ask the question. Here you go.
Hello. I've been living in the Woodbridge community just for two months now. I haven't met any of the elected officials, so I wouldn't mind meeting someone this evening.
Well, what I would suggest, you walk back there with the man raising his hand, that is the mayor.
Okay.
And Commissioner Siple was here, I saw. She had to leave. So Mayor Ordis is right there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I was at Woodbridge community meeting two weeks ago.
Mr. Mayor, you have a question? I'll bring this one to you. Thank you.
Good evening. First, my name is Jerry Mayer. I am a member of the Hurricane Disaster Committee that is responsible for making recommendations to the city commission on what we should be doing or could be doing to better prepare for hurricanes. I have, I have to say, first of all, I can't commend the city any more than possible because they have provided an absolute opportunity for everybody to feel safe, and they really need to be recognized for that. However, I do have two questions. What if? What if we don't have any power and we don't have any telephones and we don't have any internet? How do we communicate information to the general public? My suggestion is, has anyone considered a Pembroke Pines or local community radio station to provide that information that can be done without power?
Well, first of all, that's something we certainly can look into, but you have to understand, not understand, but one of the things to be aware of, when the presentation that was made here this evening by all of the departments, they're telling you basically what you should do as an individual to prepare yourself in the event that were to occur, by preparing, by having food for a number of days, water, medical supplies, and whatever. If power goes out, there are situations where there are shelters. We would hope those would, people would go to those shelters prior to the storm, but it's a difficult thing when there is no communication. The best thing to do, stay safe or in a safe location, say where you are, and we'll try to get information to the public as soon as we can. Most of the questions you are asking are questions that we've been directing to Florida Power and Light regarding hardening, what their practice and policy is regarding that. I do believe they made a presentation to your ad hoc committee, and we certainly can ask to provide that information on our website as well by videotaping what they would suggest as the people who have to provide power and to provide communications.
Yeah, I understand that, Mr. Dodge. My concern is, if you don't have the power, is there any consideration for a radio station which doesn't require that kind of power to transmit information on a minute-by-minute basis as things arise? Has there any consideration been for that?
Our leader will address that.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge and Mr. Mayor. Good question. As we told you at the committee, we want you all to purchase battery-operated radios. Purchase enough batteries because we will be in concert with the radio stations and our Department of Emergency will also be talking about Pembroke Pines on those stations. So my answer to you, as simple as I can say it, is buy a battery-operated radio, plenty of batteries, and you'll hear everything you need to know during that hurricane emergency.
May I suggest that you designate a specific radio station that we can all tune into to know that we will have Pembroke Pines-specific information?
We have one. Mary Ann, would you mind telling us what that is?
I was going to say, on our website right now, there's a list of radio stations that will be broadcasting during a hurricane.
There you go.
We are in touch with them and we'll be providing information to them. So it's one-on-one so that if you're in the area where the signal's not as good as another, you'll be able to find another one. That's just the website now, but on the radio station list, and I don't have a radio station tomorrow.
So I would again suggest that we specifically designate a station that we can depend on providing a specific...
There will be.
Tell your wife to buy the batteries because you won't.
I'm going to charge them to you. Okay. Second question, please. You talk about preregistration for people who are disabled and elderly and other types that should preregister. All of us don't know when we're going to be disabled. It might occur during the event. Is there any provision for someone to get into that registration before the, or after the registration period is over?
Well, there is no ending to a registration period. Anyone who would like to register, it can't be 10 hours before the storm occurs, and I don't think anyone would have, be in that situation 10 hours before. You just need to plan. We publish all that information on our website, and you just have to communicate with people you know who may be in that situation, or maybe you have a family member that may need that situation. But we do maintain a list, and there is that ability to register, but it can't be at the last minute.
So I would strongly suggest that you provide people with the information to where they can register at any time, period.
Mary Ann, where is that?
It's on our website, ppines.com/hurricane. There's two registries.
So pay attention, folks. Write it down somewhere.
The presentation was well done. I really appreciate that. This may be outside of your responsibilities as a city, but for the health and welfare of the community, is there an awareness that we would know about as far as Memorial West with a UPS, uninterrupted power? The police station has uninterrupted power? The gas stations may have uninterrupted power, or maybe Publix and things like that? Because I think there was a push to do that at one time from a public perspective, but what about, again, the welfare at the hospitals?
The hospitals certainly have power, emergency power, at their location. Our Emergency Operations Center also has power here. During the hurricane, we had power the entire time to also communicate with people. Oh, thank you. And there are many Publixes. You'll notice after Irma, many Publixes were open because they are now built with generators. They're, the city encouraged, and there's an awful lot of gas stations today that have emergency power, so after the storm, it's not like a prior hurricanes where gas stations were shut down, grocery stores couldn't open. The area where we provide assistance to are those who are unable to, do not have transportation. We provided a tremendous amount of service to the elderly population, both in our major condominiums that do where seniors reside. So we provide that. We do health checks at all of the senior facilities, those that are assisted living facilities. There's a law now where they're also required to have emergency power. So the city is involved in, prior to the storm, as soon as the storm is over, we start doing our checks too for everyone. And I forget how many thousands of meals that we prepared. You may not, I'm sure you're not aware of this, but the city even has an emergency operation kitchen where we prepared meals for many of our elderly, and I believe, Steve, is it about 15,000 meals a day that kitchen can produce? So we have that in operation today, right on University Drive, and we prepared meals and actually delivered them to the Century Villages and other locations way out west in the remote areas where people weren't able to get out. So we've made those provisions for people, but there are those locations where there is emergency power, where people can go, certainly in the area of the hospitals. Yes?
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I want to first of all to thank you to Pembroke Pines for the last time they... I want to first of all to thank you, to Pembroke Pines, for the last time with the hurricane, you responded very well to Century Village. I am a resident of Century Village. We have 17,000 residents. My question to you is, we know we are working, we have, trying to implant a system in Century Village. I want to know how far we are with Century Village and the police department in case the, you know, we got a lot of senior citizens over there. Because the last time there was a lot of people, you know, it was great, the service, but, you know, there were, and outside of the village, there's some business that have electricity and everything. So I hope that next time, you know, we don't think we're going to be that lucky. I just want to know how, how well are we working with Century Village, Pembroke Pines and Century Village? How, do we have any coordination or anything implanted?
You mean, regarding to power?
Regarding power, ice, people that, that are, with walkers, wheelchairs, you know, I mean, do we have any, anything?
Well, we, we, last time, we do set up an operations center there where we also had ice delivered. We delivered meals to the homes. There were issues at Century Village, and we've been addressing it with them, that they need to have emergency generators in their elevator shafts, because there were many seniors who were trapped on the fourth, third, and second floors. But we had enough volunteers that actually delivered ice and meals to those people. The difficulty is that you have to rely upon your energy provider to restore energy, and that's the most difficult thing. But our command center from our police department was there. They'll continue to be there. They'll continue to be at any location within our city where there is a need for it. This young lady here.
Good evening. Just a question. The first speaker in the presentation referred to moving to higher ground, but where would be considered higher ground in Pembroke Pines?
Well, a lot of those, a lot of those comments that are in there relate not only to Pembroke Pines. When we refer to the higher grounds, it's mostly in the eastern part of Broward County that's close to the ocean. If you look at Hollywood and those areas, they flood. We're very fortunate that our drainage system is very good, but if you have an awful lot of rain and there is an issue, we've not had that in the past in Pembroke Pines, so I don't really think that's an issue for us. The officer who made that presentation, I think, were some of the general comments that FEMA and organizations advise you of, that if you're in a low-lying area, in particular in the east, if you know you flood out and your streets flood out, just flood out during a normal storm, you should look at getting to a location that is higher ground, and that might be moving further west or moving north.
Good evening. I have three questions. So my first question is, I know last time we had issues with the water and some water lines breaking. I'd like to know what has been done, and do we anticipate any issues if we have another major storm with the water?
Well, the issue with the water wasn't so much of the breaking of the lines as it was the power and the failure of the pumps. So the water pressure went to such a level that we had to put out notices to boil water. That happens in daily contact. I don't know, sometimes you may get a notice on your door that says, you know, this is a temporary notice to boil your water. We have found that sometimes a line will break because a construction company comes in and they drill right through the line. And if the pressure goes down to such a level, then you're required, for precaution's sake, until such time as we test the water again for any kind of bacteria, they suggest that you boil water, and then we issue a notice that the boiled water has been lifted. What I said in the beginning of the presentation was, there's a very small section of Pembroke Pines. It's noticed as the village, half of that area gets water from Broward County, because those homes were built in the 50s. Pines didn't exist then, so the water system was provided by Broward County. Broward County had a number of issues, and they were issuing boiled water notices, and they would list the cities. They would list Hollywood, Miramar, Pembroke Pines. And people living in western Pembroke Pines that received water from our water plant, there wasn't a need to boil water, and they got confused. So that's when we say we need to have one voice. We've talked to Broward County about that, that they need to verify with our community before they make statements, and people who are in charge of the operation need to have that information, so that, so the information isn't misinformation. Regarding water lines, we've never had an issue, other than occasionally you may have a collapsed line, but that happens with an older system, but we constantly fix those and repair them. We've had very few instances in the last year or so that we've had to put a boil water, and it's been localized, maybe 20 homes, 100 homes, but it's been due to a break.
And I really appreciate how you guys distributed water. I was able to be a recipient of that, and I thought that was really, that was a really great thing.
Thank you.
So thank you. My second question is, I do live on a lake, and I remember years ago that you guys would, like, lower water levels of the lake before, and I know with the rains, it's really high. Is there any plans, or how does that work, so we can understand where I live?
Okay. That's controlled by another governmental body, and here it's called the South Broward Drainage District. And anytime there's a notification, there's going to be heavy rains, they turn on the pumps, and they lower the canals, and in essence, then, the water from the lakes, if you're in Pasadena or Pembroke Lakes, you'll notice that the water table goes down a little. They do that. And in preparation of a hurricane coming in, if it looks like a wet one, they do that. They have the control of it, and the city has no control over the canals and the water bodies in the city. That's controlled by the South Broward Drainage District.
And can the residents make any request if it's too high? I mean, because it's really high even right now.
They monitor it. If you feel there's an issue at your lake, you contact us. We'll, we'll contact the South Broward Drainage District.
Okay. And my last question is regarding all the debris of the trees after the hurricane, and the weeks and probably months that it took to pick it up. I just want to understand what's the plan, and I know there were issues on the companies and, you know, so I would just like to understand. I'm sure it's a question most people would have.
Okay, that's a good question. This evening at 4:30, we had a workshop, and we selected a new vendor for that, a company. What happened during Irma was very unique. We've had hurricanes before where we've had everything picked up within 30, 60 days, but it's been a localized hurricane. It came right through Pembroke Pines, whether it be Wilmar or one of, one of the smaller hurricanes. This was a very unusual hurricane that it hit, I don't know, I think 75, 80% of the whole state. So all the resources available to us and through every other city who are competing for trucks to pick this up, it was a major issue. We were prepared for ourselves. In fact, I think in the first two days, what they call the first push, we had cleared every single street. The only streets we couldn't clear were those where there were power lines down. We have to rely on FPNL to come in, shut off the power, remove their lines before we can go in and, and pick it up. But we had a vendor who reneged on us and never showed up, so we went to the secondary one. And even the secondary vendor wasn't able to get enough resources, through no fault of their own. It's just that everyone was competing for vehicles. They were offering more money. Dade County was an exorbitant amount of money, so truckers that we had lined up to pick up debris for us went to where they're getting more money. But they may have difficulty with FEMA, who reimburses those cities, if they didn't follow the regulations and their bidding requirements. So it's a very difficult thing. We are prepared. We have a list of, tonight, the commission approved a list of 10 haulers and companies that can assist us. We're negotiating a contract. We currently have a contract with the existing one, but we redid that contract, and we're looking at using multiple contractors to help us clear up the debris. One of the other problems is, is the education, and we're shown on the videos, it's on our website. What makes it very difficult, and FEMA has direct rules on it, if you have vegetation, it has to be in one pile. If it's construction debris or furniture, it has to be in another pile. If it's commingled, we've got to leave it and get all the agricultural debris first, because you have people following the trucks by law. They have to measure it. They have to take it to a site. It has to be remeasured, and then at that site, it's chipped and ground, and then it's transported to its final destination. Then they come back for the C and D. What made it difficult was, we had to get everything that was separated first, and then that, what was commingled, we had to go pick up last, and then we had a source separated at a site. So the important part is the education to the public. It's very simple to separate it. You put vegetation in one pile, you put C and D in another pile. You're welcome.
Hi, Mr. Dodge. Good evening. I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of your, I missed the presentation at the beginning.
It was great.
I'm so mad. I'm so mad. I'll have to watch it another time. But what I wanted to address was, I think we learned a lot with the storm last year, because if it had come through the way it was originally forecast to come through, and at the severity that it was going, supposed to come through, it, there's no doubt, it would have been absolutely devastating for us, and we were all very concerned for a long time watching it come in at that force. But, so, but as a, and there's a lot of people, of course, everybody's dealing with the human factor of this, as a pet expert, that's kind of where I've put my concern. And I was very disappointed last year. I realize these are county shelter situations that are set up, but because of, Barbara Sharif has a very severe pet allergy, and she kind of was thinking in terms of that, in terms of her situation, and I find that maybe dangerous is too strong a word, but it could be dangerous, because we all know that people are very likely not to evacuate when they should, if it means they don't know what to do with their pets, if they don't feel safe about bringing their pets somewhere, or what to do with their pets, and so they just stay put, and there are many people that should evacuate during the worst times. And what happened last year and with the shelters, is there's set up, there are certain pet shelters designated, and then all the other ones don't have pets. And that was done, as I said, because she's, was so sensitive to the allergy factor. Well, it turns out, only 10% of the population actually has a pet allergy, and the number that are so severely affected is so minimal, that my contention is, it should be the other way around, that every, there should be designated non-pet shelters, and every other shelter should be able to accommodate pets, so that people can easily take their families and their pets with them to the shelter. It's, it's a lot more difficult to be driving, you know, to have to drive an hour away in some cases.
Well, that, that issue is an issue for Broward County, because shelters are all regulated by Broward County. What I would suggest to do is write to your county commissioner...
Well, I've tried, as you can imagine.
And deal with it, but it's out of our jurisdiction.
But can there be something, or some, something just for pines that you can push for, or do, or make sure is handled? Because that, that's not going to work. If that disaster had happened...
We can, we can convey your thoughts to the county, and I'll be happy to write to the mayor of Broward.
Because I've tried.
I'll be happy to write to the mayor of Broward County to do that, okay?
To look, and I appreciate it, because they don't put enough effort into that. I think they don't recognize the importance of it, and when the worst happens, and, you know, who knows when it will, then people are going to...
All right, but I certainly will write to the mayor.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks.
There's a gentleman here and there. Okay.
Hello. I'm the president of Holly Lake Association. First, I'd like to thank Iris Seiple for all she did for us after the hurricane, because she stepped to the plate. We had water, we had meals, and we were two weeks without power in certain sections. So we, certain people suffered a lot, and we have a lot of elderly. And to that, the elderly, is there any way to get any of this in print? Because 90% of the elderly do not have internet, and one of our biggest problems was the pickup of the trash. We kept telling everyone, but if we could hand out pamphlets beforehand to tell them not to mix it, because some people think it's, you know, free-for-all for a bulk, you know, let's clean out our shed and our, and I don't want that to happen, because we were picked up fairly quickly, except for the mingled, and I want them to know, and as the president, I will go and hand them out, so that they don't mingle it and we can get picked up.
The, the last edition of a newsletter that we send to every single resident, the front page was all on hurricane preparedness. We also have a link to the website, and I do understand there's some elderly that probably cannot access a computer, but we do have flyers and information that we can provide to Holly Lake. But every resident gets mailed a newsletter that has valuable information on hurricane preparedness, and it was the last one that just was mailed out to you. But again, you can watch TV, you can email people, you can send them letters, and, you know, you try the best you can to communicate, but some people just don't read it.
I, I understand that, but when we have our homeowners' meetings, I would like to be able to provide them and tell them...
You let us know, and we'll be happy to provide you with a one-sheet, two-sheet, and there's some samples out in the lobby. In the back, as you leave, we have some other hurricane information from other federal agencies that's there, as well as our own flyers. But if you're having a homeowners' association meeting, you notify us, and we'll be able to get enough to you that you can pass out if you want to the community.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi. My name is Alex Rodriguez, neighbor. Thank you very much for everything you guys do at the Rain Tree Community, so. To the gentleman question, and to everybody's awareness, real quick, there is a technology on the mobile network, the cellphone network, that would allow us to communicate even when there is no data. Like, so if we lose power and the internet happens to go down, the typical SMS that we get will still be able to work. So for those of us that are concerned about that communication, having that code-red application, you know, which I can virtually, you for deploying it for the city, and being able to communicate via SMS, not use the typical WhatsApp or Enrich messaging from Apple, but the typical basic SMS that we stopped using a few years ago, would allow us to communicate with each other. And I'll be approaching, I don't know who, within the, the community or the city, because I, I work in technology, so I could leverage some information about, you know, that could be used for...
If you would speak to Mary Ann Waller, raise your hand.
Okay. Thanks.
She's our voice, so you can talk with her.
Yeah, so everybody be, just be aware of that.
Okay.
Sure.
There's a gentleman in the front that's been waiting a long time.
To follow through with an earlier question, my understanding was that it wasn't a piping failure, it was a pump failure, that three pumps failed.
That's correct.
Has anything been done to harden the pumps, or establish redundancy for the pumps, or just make the pumps more reliable?
Well, they've all...
The failure of three pumps simultaneously, astronomical odds.
Right. They've all been replaced. As far as redundancy, we've also installed emergency generators that are permanent there as backup as well. And realizing, we really only believe it was from lightning, people don't believe that, because it's very unusual that all three would go down at the same time.
I believe, I believe Mr. Dutch, but hardening and...
Yeah, and we have, and we have done that. And all of them have been replaced. And not only that, we actually drove to another county to even get a replacement. Now, we have all of those in backup so that, hopefully, it will never occur again.
Good evening. My question is on debris pickup. Is the city going to include gated communities also in the debris pickup after hurricane? Last year after Irma, we spent $15,000 just to move our debris's outside of the property so the city would pick it up. And the hurricane before that, the city, as long as we left the gates open, came in and picked up the debris's.
Well, there are strict rules on FEMA. It was, it was a really struggle. The city believes we should. It's a very, very expensive proposition. And FEMA, depending if it's in, within the first 30 days or 60 days, you get 85% reimbursement through FEMA. But it took us a long time for FEMA to agree. Then, once FEMA agreed, there were letters that, I think, Bob, that needed to go out to all the HOAs. Have we sent those out ahead of time already?
We were working on it.
So, what we're trying to do now, instead of waiting till the storm comes, to send them to your HOAs to complete, we want to have them on file now. Our intent, yes, is, but we have to rely upon what FEMA is. And eventually, we did get in there. There were gated communities that didn't want to see the debris there and they took it upon themselves just to go in and remove it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You have an extra comment, Bob?
Those forms, they are storm-driven, so we can't get much ahead of the game. We've got to wait until we have a main storm declared, so we can get those out. It's important that we get all the information from the HOAs updated, the right people we should contact.
And that is a difficult, difficult at times because many associations change their leadership and they don't notify the community. And many times, we try to get information, not only on that topic, but many topics, and we get them returned because no longer at this address or whatever. So, we have an ordinance on the books. I don't know how you really enforce it, other than to encourage those HOAs to let us know who their contact people are, or at least the management company, so that we can provide any type of notification to the community about any event going on. There are no other members, well, you spoke once, too. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Charlie, let me just speak to the audience. It's behoven on you, if you live in an HOA, to make sure that your information is given to the city. They can only respond to those people who they think they know are the HOA representatives. And if that changes, you're out of luck. So, I would strongly suggest, all of you who belong to an HOA, to find out exactly who your HOA representatives are and turn it in to the city of Pembroke Pines, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. One last question regarding tree trimming around the city. What's the policy, especially for trees that are in the public areas in prevention? You know, I haven't seen much up until now. I know we're into the season, I'm curious.
Well, the, if it's on your property, it is your responsibility. We look at the vegetation that's in public rights way. The only thing we ask you is you don't start trimming them when you hear a storm is coming because it would be impossible for us, through our normal bulk pickup, to pick up that debris. And that happened last time, people calling us frantically that people put bulk out. So, what, if you're going to be doing, looking at your trees and your vegetation in your yards, you should be doing it now. It won't grow to the degree in six months that you have to worry about it, but it should be trimmed now. And we do put notification out that prior to a storm, if it's a week before, do not put bulk out, we cannot pick it up.
I was asking more for the city.
For the city, we also look at all of our vegetation and, you know, we do trim it. But even though you might trim a tree, it's not going to prevent it from getting blown over in a huge storm. And we had an awful, we lost an awful lot of vegetation in the cities and in the parks and there's a whole process for it. And that usually, unless it's a hazard, that stays there. That's one of the last things, you go in and trim and then you have to remove them. You have to take pictures of them and then you have to do the stump removal. It's quite a process and it takes a long time. All right, I would like to thank all of you coming this evening. Hopefully, this was informative. We would also like to have you encourage your neighbors to give them the information, this information when you leave. Please visit our social media, visit our websites, look at it. We have an awful lot of information that is, that is of interest to you as a community, not only for hurricane information, but business that goes on in the community, actions that the city commission takes. So, we encourage you to please look at that and visit it and we want to thank you. Did you have a question?
As the chairman of the ad hoc committee, I just wanted to add a comment.
Oh, certainly, come on.
I know, but I...
You were out of the room when I acknowledged you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Brian Thomason. I have the distinct pleasure to be the chair of the ad hoc committee and I know many of my constituents from the committee are here in the audience. In closing, I want to applaud the city for the proactivity they've taken. I don't think there's been any questions asked in this room tonight that the city or the staff did not have answers for. I've been in the disaster recovery business for over 20 years and I have not seen the proactivity that I have seen here in Pembroke Pines in many, many years, if ever. By them forming the committee and my hats off to staff with Public Works, with the emergency management staff, with the city manager, mayor, commissioners, and all staff, we are tasked as a committee to try to shoot holes in or find the flaws in the city's plans or with their approaches. The communications department with Mary Ann, hats off to you from, from the standpoint to where the city was a year ago to where it is now. If there's questions to be asked and you cannot find it, you're not looking in the right place. Because it's there, they have taken tremendous measures to make sure that those questions are answered for the citizens. And as the committee, we continue to work. I've been to this facility more times in the last two months than I have in the last two years because of the efforts that the city's taking to prepare for hurricanes, man-made or natural disasters. So, hats off to the staff, hats off to the citizens because your recovery starts now. Your recovery starts by you being here, asking the questions, getting the answers. Even with the FPNL staff coming in, showing where the hardening of the facilities that had taken place, we've been updated with that information. We anticipate providing a report to the commission on June 20th at that commission meeting, just with some findings of the, of the committee. And again, I cannot say enough for the efforts that the city has taken. And you should be proud, citizens of Pembroke Pines, that you live in a city that is proactive as it is. Every disaster poses a different set of circumstances. We were hit with two major back-to-back events within weeks of each other last year, which created a very significant set of circumstances. But they're here tonight, staff is getting ready and, and city manager is getting ready. And I applaud the staff and everybody that's doing everything that's going to be, thank you, staff.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.